Motion's been made. All in favor? First of all, I'd like to welcome all you people here tonight. And it's customary when we start the meeting, we do a pledge of the allegiance. I don't know many of you people, I know one person out there. And Tyler, could you come help us with the pledge of allegiance? Tyler went and did a great duty this last summer. He helped put up all the flags and take them down over in Byfield Center. And I just know him from that. And step up and you can help us.
At the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands, "One Nation, Under God, In His Soul, Liberty, Justice, Honor."
Thank you.
Good job.
I understand that you guys are all here tonight to see how Newbury works.[96.11][96.11](Laughter) It's pretty exciting, so, anyway.[99.02][99.02](Laughter) You'll follow through, if you've got any questions on anything, anytime, raise your hands and we'll get back to you, all right? First thing, do we have any board or committee reports? No, okay. There's no citizens' concerns tonight, no public hearings. Town administrator report.
Okay, the first item that I have for your execution is a release deed that was prepared for, let's see, was it 22 Independence Way? It was the action we took at the town meeting under Article 10. It requires your signatures, and then Kathy will notarize it.
So we're just, we're doing is executing this document? And for you people out there, what we just did was, we signed a document that was, the voters at town meeting passed a thing and we transferred some property to someone, and it was a boundary change, actually.
The next thing I had was the senior support staff job description that we had drafted up for the fire department, for those members of the department from age 65 to 70. Town council reviewed it, personnel board is taking action on it, but the fire engineers had some proposed changes. Town council was not accepting of those changes, so they're gonna take it back and look at it again, we're gonna ask if we can hold that off until the next meeting.
I'd like to wait till Michael Garris is here. He worked with them on it, and Chuck's got some comments on it also. So, good, all right.
Also wanted to bring to your attention the fact that our animal control officer, Carol LaRock, was recently awarded a Buddy Up Partners Award by Opportunity Works for a program that she participated in, that instructs and facilitates participants in the field of dog walking. So that happened last month, and I didn't know if any of you were aware of it, so I just wanted to bring your attention to it, you can take a look at that when you have a chance. We also gained approval by the Division of, Department of Veterans Services for our entry into the Regional Veterans Program in Ipswich. That's something that we've been waiting for final approval, so that did happen. Our new agent will come onboard as of the 1st of December, just so you're aware of that. And the chairman of the board typically sits on the veterans board as well, they meet about once a year, so I gave them your contact information, Joe. Okay. And the only other thing that I wanted to bring your attention to was our betterment analysis. I asked the town accountant that she prepare this on an annual basis, so we could see at any point in time, at the close of our fiscal year's operations, what our balance, our projected balance at the end of the debt service payments will be for the betterment program out on Plum Island. And as of June 30th of 2013, again, it's a projected surplus, and it makes a lot of assumptions, but we're looking at about $2.7 million in that fund, so just so you're aware of that. And we can tap into that for emergencies, we used it for, I think, sandbags at one point in time, any types of repairs to the system, those types of things, so that is available. And I'll give you, again, at the end of each year's operation, an update on that, so you know where it is.
Just so there's no confusion, especially to people that are watching this at home, this isn't something that would be used to fix the system if there was brakes in it right now.
Uh-uh.
That's Newbury.
That's up to the city. That's it for tonight.
Okay, the, we talked about the job description for the senior support staff, and we're gonna table that, that was tabled at the 10-8 meeting, and we're gonna wait till Mike gets back and some more talk about it. We have a recommendation from Chief Riley, appoint James Bedad as a reserve police officer. And we've got, "Dear Honorable Board of Selectmen, I respectfully request your approval for the appointment of the following person, Reserve Police Officer, James Bedad. Mr. Bedad comes highly recommended from the Essex County District Attorney's Office. He's a Reserve Academy, he is Reserve Academy trained, and has passed an extensive background check. Upon appointment, Mr. Bedad would be ready for patrol officer field training, as well as training in dispatch duties. This appointment is budget neutral, as reserve officers fill in vacancies in the police schedule and do not add to the budget. The required personnel action forms for this appointment have been submitted to the personnel board." Second. Any discussion questions? No? All in favor? And we have a request for a, another police for, request for a police department appointment. Dear Honorable Board of Selectmen, I respectfully request your approval for the appointment of the following person, effective 11/12/2013, Reserve Dispatcher, Katerina Papoulis. Ms. Papoulis has undergone an extensive background investigation and psychological examination. Her role as a police dispatcher would be budget neutral, as reserves fill in vacancies in the schedule and do not add additional positions. This appointment is fully funded in the FY 2014 budget. The required personnel action forms for this appointment have been submitted to the personnel board."
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other discussion question? All in favor? We have now a request from the conservation agent to appoint Susan Neusch as an alternate to the board for a three-year term. Dear Selectmen, the Conservation Commission has for some time discussed the need for an alternate to either fulfill a quorum as required by law, or to provide direction and/or guidance to the board. The Commission, by unanimous vote, has chosen Susan Neusch to fulfill that role. Susan has worked closely with the Commission, now going on nine years, and has an excellent understanding of the process and regulation. The Commission has complete faith in her ability to perform this duty, and for these reasons requests the Board of Selectmen to appoint Susan Neusch to a three-year term as alternate to the Newbury Concom. Respectfully submitted, Doug Packer.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions, discussions?
Just wondering, are there any legal implications of having an alternate board member also be a town?
I don't think so.
I'm not aware of any, I can, Ginny will be here tomorrow, I can bring that up with her, there may be some kind of special municipal employee designation required.
Sometimes we get into this stuff without realizing it, that's why.
Why don't we change the motion to, after we get approval from Ginny?
Pending approval from town council.
Pending approval from town council.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of that? All right. We have a other request. I've got it for the registered voters? Okay, that's, I don't think that's in here. No. Yeah, and, okay, I'll read the letter. "To the Honorable Board of Selectmen regarding appointment of registered voters. In addition to the list provided by Linda Allen, Chair of the Republican Committee, please consider registered Republican Nancy Jones of Foddy Fordham Way for the position of registered voters to replace long-term registered Francis Webb, who passed away in August. Nancy has expressed willingness to take on the role for the open three-year term, and certainly possesses the appropriate qualifications. Thank you, Leslie Haley, Town Clerk." This is something that they kinda needed for the last election, but we're a little bit late doing, so, anyway. Motion?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Okay, motion to appoint, second. Any other discussions, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
What are these things? Okay, we have appointments, we've got the James Bedad, Papoulis, Susan Neusch, did you have enough, you had more, Chuck?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, this is naming Tracy Blais as the Insurance Advisory Committee, on the first Insurance Advisory Committee. Also Alex McCotrell, and Angel Willis, Diane Doyle, Kathy Saroyes, and Patty Fisher, Jimmy, Ginny Kramer, and I guess that's it. Motion to appoint would, but before I make that motion, what is an Insurance Advisory Committee, Tracy?
Basically, they just review the policies, they, anytime we propose making a change to the current coverage, we activate them, and they review it and would make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. The last time when we made the plan design changes, I think about a year and a half ago, they weighed in on that, that decision.
So this committee is advisory basically to the Selectmen and, you know, and you are just?
Yeah, to the Selectmen.
Yep, yep. Okay.
Second to motion.
Motion made, yep. Any questions, discussion? No? All in favor? And, what else we got? Oh, we've got the, the special permit decision. Now, this was voted on the other night, and it's all typed up now, and we need a vote on it to make it official. And this is for the people that wanna put the Playmakers Incorporated out on Route One. And what it's gonna be is, it's kind of like a different type nursery preschool operation. And it's gonna be out in the area where Tom Palumbo had his law office, and Paca River Clean Water Association was. And we had the public here the other night, voted on it, and tonight is, we vote on it and sign it.
I don't, I don't have a copy of it, and my batteries are dead. Electronics are good, as long as you charge them up.
All right. Yeah, so anyway, this is what we voted on, you read, you did the, you reviewed it? No. We can't do anything. I thought we had to, I thought it was a super majority. All right. It's been voted, all right, so sign it. So we'll sign it when Mike gets back, he can sign it, make it legal. Okay, all right.
Should the rest of us sign it?
Yes, it should.
Should we count this as the official copy?
Yeah.
We have a letter from the Zoning Board of Appeals here, and the ZBA has recently reviewed their application fees using information gathered by Susan Neusch for Tracy. Has been several years since this fee has been increased. It was the unanimous decision of our board to ask that the flat fee for applications be raised from $75 to $125 immediately. No other changes are anticipated at this time, and signed by Howie Trace, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussions, questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done. What else we got? Greg Pugh requesting music on November 27th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Routine?
Routine.
Routine? Six to 10 is your usual times?
Yes, sir.
And November 27th is what day?
Day before Thanksgiving.
Day before Thanksgiving.
Before.
Very good day, okay.
Thanksgiving's late this year, isn't it?
Yeah, okay. Motion?
That's why I was confused. Yes, motion to approve.
Second. Any other questions for Greg? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, all set. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks for coming in.
And for you, for you people here, this is Greg Pugh, he owns the Beach Comer on Plum Island, Craig Burg is down there, and the other thing, the other thing I wanna give him a plug is, whenever we have problems down Plum Island, I didn't say whenever, he steps up and he does fundraisers, and donates money to help with whatever needs to be done there. So, again, we thank him, all right? Ralph and Joanne Johnson, from Newbury Port Coral Society, concert, oh, they request a banner announcing the concert. I don't see Ralph here.
I'm Ralph and Joanne tonight. They're actually at a Coral Society board meeting, so they couldn't be here tonight and ask me to present the request on their behalf. And basically, it's for a two-and-a-half-foot-high-by-eight-foot-long banner to go on the backstop. Ideally, they'd like to put it up the Friday or Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, and take it, take it down Monday, the Monday after the concert, so that would be Monday, December 16th, because concerts on 14th and 15th. So it'd be actually 17 days.
Motion to approve.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor? All right, these are the minutes? Okay, from October 8th, and these are the ones we saw electronically tonight. Motion?
Was I here for that one?
Were you here? Yes, in attendance.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions, corrections, additions, deletions? No? All in favor?
Joe, did you skip over me on purpose? I thought maybe you wanted to put it at the end.
No, because I, I am missing a thing, a page.
Yeah, I'm missing one.
Okay, and you were on the page that's missing. Okay? It's everything that was on the second page.
No.
Jeff had it electronically, Dave's battery went dead. So we've got several things on here. All right, John is here to talk about some assistance that may be requested from MVPC.
Would you mind just sort of passing that around?
And for you people in here, John is on our planning board, he works with the Concom, and he is the expert in town on stormwater regulations, so.
That last word, expert, you know, you're never an expert in the town you live in, you gotta be at least 200 miles from home to be an expert. Anyway, this is, this is a request that we're not originating. MVPC made Tracy aware some weeks ago of a program of grants that they were gonna put through, and they were asking Newbury's interest in what particular areas. There were a number of different possibilities, and we looked over the things that we thought we might want cash for, as opposed to doing it, as so far, we've been very lucky in terms of volunteer help. And came up with two things specifically, one being the purchase of test kits, and the other being the design and construction costs of any stormwater retrofits that we may be forced into in the future. There's a few that we can do with volunteer help, but, and probably a bit of town forces, but if you get into anything serious, we're gonna need some serious money. And that, you know, remains to be seen what that has to, what that has to be. Anyway, I checked around with the various committee members, and when I talked to Chuck, he thought it would be appropriate that the Selectmen kick this around themselves. So I'm here just to answer questions if there are any. It's a fairly, in my opinion, a fairly, you know, benign situation. We're not giving up any responsibilities there. I, I wrote a letter, and Martha, as she often does, she sort of straightened me out, and she rewrote it for me. And it came out a lot better the way she wrote it. But that's the, that's the markup letter that you have, which would be, I wrote for Tracy's signature, saying what we're interested in, but I tried to make the point, Martha made it a little more diplomatically than I, that we want to maintain our independence in this. I'm really not thrilled with turning over the doing of something to another agency. We're gonna be the ones that are, that are fined, so I want, you know, the town to keep control over what we're doing. But we certainly would welcome assistance, advice, money, any kind of assistance, we need all the help we can get.
John, I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
The first, what does CIC stand for?
Same question.
David, I can't hear you.
What, what does CIC stand for?
I don't know. Do you know, Martha?
You know, when I was the representative to the Mayor Back Planning Commission, they always gave us a list of acronyms, because never just gonna remember all this stuff.
I didn't think that was of the essence, so I never asked.
The more serious question, actually, is the, the testing, what kind of testing are we talking about? Who would, if we get the equipment and supplies, who would be doing it?
I'm gonna have to leave the microphone, David, I can't answer you, but I can't hear you.
Right, I'm asking about the testing equipment.
Yes.
What kind of testing, who would be doing it if we get the money for the equipment and for the supplies?
Well, we haven't nailed down exactly who. I have a number of, I'd rather not be saying who has volunteered, because they may change their mind. We have a number of volunteers that are interested in working on it. Yvonne Boswell, who you know from Paca River, has graciously agreed to be the chair of that, of that group. And she being a chemist, I, you know, she's been a terrific amount of help so far, and she's nailed down the cost and, you know, what she wants to get. And we have talked, you know, I, we haven't really discussed this with other towns yet, but the thought I had is maybe with the other two towns in our watershed, our Paca River's watershed, we might make arrangements so that, since we now, the new permit indicates a compressed time which we can do this, we don't have all year, we have sort of like three to four months, to work with the other towns and loan each other testing equipment back and forth. We'd all buy our own supplies and reagents. But, the idea being that we only want one set of test equipment, rather than two or three.
Another point, I was, I sat in with John and Martha this afternoon, and we're not really making much of a commitment here, and we're saying we're interested, and then anything we get, we're not gonna be driven by them, we're gonna request it, so we're still in control of it, so that's another point.
John? Yes, sir. Did these bullets come from MVPC? Those, that's MVPC's letter you're holding, yes, that's, that's their thought. Any idea what you get out of study, the potential of creating a stormwater utility? We have kicked that around internally, Tracy and Martha and Doug and I, we didn't hold up a lot of hope for something like that flying here. Now, you know, maybe sometime in the future. It has worked out well in other communities, in other states. I wasn't really planning on pursuing that. You know, if, if there's a lot of interest in it, I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to do that, it just struck me as though I got better things to do that are more likely to be successful in. Zach, what's your thoughts? Why are you asking, Jeff? You know, because I wasn't sure if you created the bullets for MVPC. Oh, no, no, no. And that seemed like maximum, you know, husk power all of a sudden, and I didn't understand it. Yeah, it's their, it's all their, that's their letter, it's Dennis Dzoglio signed the letter, he addressed it to Tracy, Tracy passed it on to me. And I looked over the list, and most of those things, frankly, I think we have under control. People in town have been absolutely wonderful in terms of their willingness to step up to the plate and help. You know, I'd expect people to be crossing the street when they see me coming, but instead, they've been asking me what they can do. Now, do, do we have a lot of stormwater infrastructure and outfalls in comparison to other towns? Are we medium? I'd say we're medium. Medium, okay. Yeah, in terms of the towns, the people with whom I've talked, towns of our size, towns in this vicinity, yeah, we're average. I don't think we're, we are, we are fortunate in that we don't have a lot of things that are likely to be polluting our stormwater system. The three rivers that we are in, you know, that, about us, are our source, our destination for our stormwater, they are all, they're all impaired, and they're all impaired with pathogens, which means basically septic systems, perhaps agricultural. So, I mean, they're not, they're not driving for heavy metals and things like this? Well, I don't, we're gonna have to test for them, but we, I don't expect we're gonna run into a lot of that. One last, one last question, John. Like, federal EPA, I mean, state-driven or federal-driven? Oh, this is all federal. Yeah. DEP is partnering with the state, with the feds, but this is enforced, is driven and enforced by the feds. DEP is just kinda watching.
And John has really led us ahead of the curve on this. We are very ahead of other towns, because he grabbed ahold of the folks who went around and dug up all of the drains, and put one of the committee members with him to look at the drain, what kind, where is it, map it, GPS it, and what shape is it in, what does it need for repair, and a quick test on it. So we're way ahead of the curve, so kudos to John for that.
Well, you know, we have to be, with a volunteer situation, we'd be totally overwhelmed if we waited for the whistle to blow and then started to do something. The only way we'll survive this is to get an early start and do as much as we can, and get as much in place as we can before the whistle blows.
And money. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. So a motion to have Tracy send this letter off?
Yes, motion to.
Second. David, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again.
Okay, Beach Comer, banner on the backstop, minutes. Any communications anyone had with any other groups or anything?
Solar panel field, you wanna talk about that?
Sure.
Actually, I don't know, I left more confused than when I went into Be God's Honest Truth.
Myself and Chuck and Martha went to a, I don't know what to call it, a meeting, and it was an informational meeting on the laws that govern solar funding and solar energy credits. And what, in a nutshell, the governor passed a thing a couple of years ago, I'll say a couple of years ago, I've got no idea how long ago it was, and it was to, an incentive to create so many megawatts of generation of electricity. to create so many megawatts of generation of electricity through solar power. And what happened is that got filled up. They used, they've used all that capacity, and right now they're working on phase two, and it's going to be a little bit more complex, but it's also going to be, I think they're heading in the right direction. They're going to encourage these solar projects to be put closer to where it's being used. A lot of this money and these credits went to the western part of Massachusetts, and the governor and the people he's put in charge want to put them closer to where the electricity gets used, and they're really going to do more encouragement on, you get higher credits for, if you put a project on that is actually creating power on the facility, you're going to use it. And it's before and after the meter, and they want them after the meter, so it's right on the site. And other than that, it's, like Chuck said, we sat there and listened to it and said, wow, there's a lot to this that we don't know.
Yeah.
So, I mean, seriously. So that was about it. Anyone else have anything?
Actually, a question to David, and it doesn't need to be totally answered tonight, but, you know, when Joe was telling me about this, even though it was a quasi-public-private meeting, you know, that they attended, but it might have been great for public information. It seems like, I mean, we've probably got quite a bit of money in our communication budget right now. When are we going to be able to maybe either pay Caleb more or get, you know, like at odd times in the morning when we have board meetings or when there's something offsite that is very interesting for the town, how are we going to be able to eventually, you know, get those things filmed and put on the cable? If there's, the answer doesn't have to be, should go to your committee and just kind of talk about it.
Well, I can just tell you, I mean, we've discussed this, and, you know, we're trying to phase in the cable TV, and it's a pretty complicated process. We've got the first phase of equipment, those of you that have watched the channel know it's functional. We're a little short on content, I think, which is partly what Jeff is talking about. And going forward, as you probably realize, a lot of our board meetings aren't all that exciting. Sometimes we get a good topic or two, but we're trying to fill it out with stuff of community interests. So Caleb's already done a couple programs so far, you know, related to local history and places of interest, and we're hoping to flesh that out. Right now, we're still trying to resolve some technical issues, so we actually hired a consultant to help us with some of the technical stuff. And, you know, we're trying to sort of evolve as opposed to try to do this too fast to work out all the bugs and stuff, but I think, you know, going forward, we definitely have room in the budget for more help. Right now, what we're really trying to do is see what we can find in terms of volunteers in the community that would be interested in helping with just the recording of meetings, because producing a whole show requires quite a bit more experience than, you know, our average person. We've had an individual recently contact us who'd be interested in actually doing some production stuff, but we're not sure we're actually ready for that. And there's also a question of, you know, who are the right people given the type of programming? So it's a work in progress, I guess, is the main answer to Jeff's question. But, you know, it's for the audience's sake, the cable TV operation is fully funded by Comcast. It doesn't come out of taxpayer dollars at all. That we get a certain percentage of their fees that come back to the town to support the whole cable TV. It's part of our contract that allows Comcast to be the cable provider for our town. So, you know, if you look around, you'll see TV camera, remote-controlled TV cameras on, you know, three walls of this room, you've got the microphones. This is all part of the equipment that goes into producing all the cable TV stuff that you see. And also, we're uploading a lot of the material to YouTube, so if you want to watch it, it's your convenience as opposed to waiting until it comes on the Newbury Channel. You can go to YouTube, and there's links to that from the town website.
There might be several students, I think, that might actually be interested in doing some of the stuff over at the high school. I'm actually right in the middle, but there's over the summer programs that I've seen that I think that would interest some of the kids over there.
No, we're definitely in contact with Triton and sort of along the lines of what you suggest. When we first got started, we actually had students from Triton helping us doing the videoing of meetings because we didn't have our own equipment. One of the challenges we find working with Triton students is that many of the ones that are interested don't have driver's licenses, so it's hard for them to get, and even if they have a driver's license, they may not have a spare car in the family. And so the transportation problem has proved to be a bit of a bottleneck, but we know they have an excellent media program at Triton, and also, we're trying to work with them to get more of the Triton material up on the cable channels as well, not just, so we're entitled to two channels, a sort of a public access government channel and education channel. And we're working on the equipment side right now to see what we can do to get that education channel to actually reflect the Triton system and Newbury Elementary School and so on as opposed to, you know, some other community. So it's, again, it's a work in progress, but thanks again for the suggestion.
Yeah, is there such a thing as a merit badge for communication or anything like that? It might be something you guys could work on and contact our media committee, and it might be. So, anyway.
I have to thank the Scouts for coming. I was immensely involved in Scouts and Troop 44. Oh my gosh, Nathan and Josh are now Forty and Thirty-seven, but they went through, they became Eagles. And so often, both my boys say, not only has it helped them to obtain that rank, but it also has given them the ability, like Nathan now, he's a superintendent at golf course at Old Newbury, and he still uses the scout method to like organize the guys and send them out the door. So what you're involved in now, guys, is really life-changing. I know it changed, I'll never forget, I think it was up Pike Stave Hill in West Newbury, and I'm kind of an outdoorsman, and I went on my first winter campout with the troop. And the kids were pretty well-prepared, as you know, with, you know, clothes selling, all the things that they come with now. Well, you know, I drove up in my truck, and I figure I'm all set, and I got, I froze to death. Absolutely froze to death, sleeping basically on the ground that night. So what you're going to learn, and what your scout masters, and what they're going to mentor in scout camp, and what you guys are doing, you're going to smile, but it'll follow you all day, that you're on the earth. It's a great thing, scouting's a great thing. Congratulations to be part of it.
I guess we're pretty much done. Does anyone have any questions on what we've done?
Could you mind just taking a second and kind of going back to the beginning, and, you know, who's in front of us right now? What are your roles? What is the form of government the town operates under, you know, selectmen versus...
The town of Newbury, we have a Board of Selectmen, and we are responsible for policy, like appointments. We appointed people tonight. We authorized the town administrator, which is Tracy Blasey. Oh, Tracy Blasey, town administrator, Chuck Baer, selectman, Joe Story, selectman, Jeff Walker, selectman, Dave Mountain, selectman, and Kathy Saroy, she's the administrators that, what, aide, which I don't even know the title. She's our secretary, but she does a lot more than that. She keeps us in line, tells us when we do things wrong, when we do things right. And all the things we did, that's our job. In cities, they're governed by a mayor and a city council, okay? We have a Board of Selectmen in towns in Newbury. The ultimate, the ultimate decisions in a town of Newbury is made at the town meeting, okay? Every dollar that we spend gets appropriated at a town meeting. We don't, you know, we can only, the town can only spend what is appropriated, and that's, the voters come. It's the purest form of democracy, and some say it's the best, some say it's the weakest, because we'll appropriate millions and millions of dollars for our town budget every year, and we're lucky to get 100 people show up to vote on it. Those 100 people made the decisions on how the town is funded and run for the year, and that includes with zoning bylaws and that type of thing. So, like I say, but we meet every two weeks, and we go through given permits, appointments, requests to other communities for things. We have, we have public hearings sometimes. We give, like Greg Pugh was here from the Beach Coma. He wants to have a license to give, to have music there the day before Thanksgiving. We authorize that to happen, that's part of our job. We give liquor licenses. A lot of the nonprofits down at Historic New England, when they have a fundraiser for something, we grant them like a one-day liquor license to serve liquor. We have controls on it in that they submit paperwork to Kathy, she makes it sure it's all right, and makes sure that they have the prop insurance license and the bartender's qualified to serve liquor. So that's the type of things. We kind of, like I say, any other?
Yeah, one way I often describe it is that the Board of Selectmen is what we'd call the executive branch, so it'd be equivalent to a mayor in a city, or the President of the United States at the federal government. And then the legislature is town meeting. Every, in our town, it's an open town meeting, every registered voter, and we've got, what, 5,000 or something registered voters in town, who are eligible to vote at town meeting. So anybody who's a registered voter can show up, and so they're legislative branch, and that's why they're responsible for things like budgets and so forth, just like where our Congress is. Or in the case of a city, the legislative branch would be the city council. So that's kind of the way I help people try to understand it. Some communities that have town form of government have representative town meeting where you elect representatives, so it's not open to all the voters like it is in our town, but you have people who are elected by the voters to represent them at town meeting. You'll find that in some of the larger towns, but I think, you know, it's something that's unique to New England. It really goes back to colonial times. The size of the Board of Selectmen in this town has varied over the years. It started out as seven, it shrunk to three, now we're back up to five. So even the size of the board, and again, that has to be approved at town meetings. So if you folks, you know, young folks, if you stay in Newbury and become registered voters, you'll get your chance to vote at town meeting too. And again, you know, we're elected officials, just like a mayor or a president is an elected official.
But I think, too, we can't overlook the fact that before we became involved in town administrator-style government, a lot of what we did, Tracy now helps with us. And Tracy, do you think you could give a little bit of a synopsis of some of the things that you have to do during one single day?
We'll be here all night.
Which isn't obvious. Well, basically, the board are the policymakers, and I take their policy, and I implement it. I deal with all sorts of things, including the finances of the town. I assist residents, I hear complaints, I convey information back and forth between boards and committee members, between the residents, and the executive branch. That's pretty much most of what takes up my day.
So we're very pleased that she does what she does. It certainly helps us.
Chuck, you got it? Okay, all right. Any other questions? You must have something. And again, like I, yeah.
So you said there's five selectmen, so who's not here tonight?
Michael Garis. Mike Bogaris is in Dana Faba. He had, he had a procedure yesterday, he's being treated for cancer.
We should let him off the hook now, huh?
What?
Best of luck to him.
I would hope so.
Now, let me ask the troop back, what is, what are you guys involved in right now? What's big?
With respect to what?
What is the troop involved in? What are you, what are you going to do this winter? Have you got outdoor camping, what's next?
We're going to Jackson, Hampshire.
Awesome.
We have a hike.
Great.
We usually go up to Parkland, Serbien, depending on weather, depends how far up we get. We have a winter campery, freeze-out.
Yep. Where do you do it now?
This year, it's done through the district.
Yep.
Which is a larger group. It's up in Amesbury, I think, is where they're going to do it again this year.
Now, where do you guys go for summer camp?
We go to Tuttka, which is in Northwood, Hampshire.
Okay.
Spend a week up there. It is probably the most fun week that you can have.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it's on a nice lake, and we've had some nice campsites, you have a tent, you open the flaps, and you look out at the sunset over the lake.
We used to...
And the tents were up to work with the mosquitoes.
We used to be Lone Tree, and then we went to Hidden Valley.
Yeah.
When I was in, part of the troops.
We still use Lone Tree, that's where I got this voice, I was up there this weekend with the Cub Scouts, I did a chuck wagon derby. So those Cub Scouts running around dragging chuck wagons and doing different events. When you talk about being prepared, you can see the difference between Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts, because they came in sweatshirts and t-shirts, and it was about 42 with the wind chill down in the 30s, and they were freezing.
Yeah. Well, thanks.
We went to, I'll just say a couple other things.
Sure.
We went to whitewater rafting up in Maine last year.
Terrific.
Two years ago, we went to Geissberg. We've done whitewater rafting a couple times, taken some good canoe trips up and down the Saco, and our goal now is to go, not this coming summer, but the next summer, to Washington, DC.
Great, great, super. How many scouts in this group?
We have 33 right now. It'll shuffle a little bit. We recharter at the start of the year. We're chartered by the Elks. Your Order of Health Chairman is going to be our new representative, and I thought I'd see him here tonight, because he said he might come, that's Steve, but...
Steve Fram.
I don't see him anywhere, so we'll track him down later. But we've grown in the past seven years, gotten involved from about 12 kids up to high of 34.
That's terrific. Something's working.
Where do you have your regular meetings?
We meet at the, well, I call it the range, the Byfield Town Hall, or the...
Great question.
Byfield Center for the Arts, whatever you want to call it, 7th Central Street.
Okay.
So, and thank you to the selectmen who, when that lease was put out years ago, grandfather has in perpetuity, can't get rid of us.
Yeah.
And let it, and Teddy and us get along great, and so I don't think they would ever try anyway.
That's good. All right, anything else? Why don't you all stand up and wave at the little eye on the wall there, okay?
Got you.
And stand up and wave, and all your brothers and sisters can see you at home, okay? All right.
It's your only chance to be on TV, guys. Come on.
All right. Okay. Shh. Shh. Okay, now, we'll show you the final part of the meeting.
Joe, I have two 443s for ADCC for the licensing.
Okay, so...
And they just need signatures, neither one needs a hearing or anything.
Okay.
One is for, I'm real, just a correction of the description of the premises.
Okay.
Because the description on their license for years has been from the old building way back, it never got changed. And the second one is per change of manager at the Old Town Country Club, so it needs signatures on the left side there.
Do we, should we, we didn't, we just sign those, right?
They just need signatures.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, yeah, that's what I was going to do, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, Jeff?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye, done, we're done.